Item number 14, Councilmember Bear.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a discussion item to discuss permitting of the property located at 1625 North Palafox Street and whether it meets the allowable uses to find the city land development code for a C-3 district. This is a discussion item only, Madam President.
Okay. Any comments? Yes, Councilmember Johnson.
Madam President, after the email we received today, is this appropriate to move this forward as the city attorney, Mr. Metzer?
Mr. Metzer.
Council President, Councilman Johnson, I think that it exceeds my legal duty to determine whether or not it's appropriate to move forward. I think that's a decision for this council. But let me try to put this in a perspective that might allow us a little better understanding. This situation, we use the metaphor of a driver on a highway. We have a driver on a highway that's approaching a potentially perilous situation. There's a sign that says, "Danger Ahead." Now, I'm the guy that sent out the email that said, "Danger Ahead." I didn't say you couldn't discuss it. I didn't say you could discuss it. All I said was, like the driver of a car, you're going to have to make the decision if you want to proceed and how you want to proceed. So if you're asking me if there's any legal prohibition against discussing it, the answer is a resounding no. If you're asking me where you're going to go with this and what my opinion of that action would be, I don't know where this council's going to go. All I can say again is, just proceed with caution.
Councilmember Winkett.
Well, I guess my question is, what's the end result of us having this discussion? Are we planning to take any particular action once we discuss it? Or is this just to get us on the record as talking about this particular issue of the use of 1625 North Palafox Street?
Councilmember Bear.
Thank you, Madam President. I did not specify an action to be taken. We've had discussion items before. My thought was that we'd give the neighborhood a chance to come speak. Ms. Castile said that a member, someone from the Department of Corrections could be there also to speak about this issue. I think ultimately this could lead to something down the road, maybe a change in our land development code because clearly it may not be clear enough. And I will, I did put a hand out next to your place also. It's straight out of Florida Statute 768.28, and it discusses our, it discusses, discusses the fact that we don't have liability for torts unless an officer, employee, or agent acting in bad faith or with malicious purpose or in a manner exhibiting wanton and willful disregard of human rights, safety, or property. I understand what the city attorney is saying in that we need to proceed with caution. If you don't wish to speak during discussion, you don't have to speak. There's no requirement of that. But I have reviewed the case law that he cited, and in fact, the portion he cited for tortious interference was remanded back to the district level court from the appeals court. A better case that further illustrates the issue of tortious interference is Albrighton versus Gandy, which is back from 1988, which actually involved the county commissioner, who did act with malicious and, I think, malicious purpose or manner exhibiting wanton and willful disregard because he sought to have someone fired. And that, I think, meets the test of tortious interference. I don't think a discussion meets that legal test. And in my discussion with Mr. Metzer, he seemed to concur with my position that a discussion does not violate or put us at risk of anything.
I would like to make a motion that we pull this item.
Second motion.
Okay. Thank you for second. And the reason is, is because when I got the flyer from the Neighborhood Association, I got one in my door, and the flyer wanted the city council to take action. That's what it inferred, is that the city council was to take some action in reference to what has already been permitted. And with the, with the state coming, the State Department of Corrections coming, I feel that it's more appropriate for the state to come to the Neighborhood Association and discuss this issue with the Neighborhood Association. The discussion that we should have should have some type of parameters. We're just not going to be there Thursday discussing it, and then when our city, when our city residents walk out the door, they expect a discussion to end with something. Now, according to Councilmember Bear, he is saying that this may lead to a review of our zoning, our land development code, which is, that is appropriate. All neighborhood associations and everything have an opportunity if they have some concerns about the land development code. But for this particular issue, my indication is that there was going to be some type of action. The council meeting is just not for discussion without having some type of end game in mind. Whether or not we're going to allow the permitting, whether or not we can allow the permitting, all of those types of things need to be relevant here. And to have an open-ended discussion is, I think, for this particular issue, is inappropriate. I think our Neighborhood Association there needs to be able to have whether or not the building is going to go up, whether or not the council can stop the building from going up, whether or not the State Department can address some of their safety concerns. So I think that at this point in time, it should not be on the agenda and that the Department of Justice, Department of Corrections should have an opportunity to speak to the Neighborhood Association and address many of their concerns. And so that is where I am with it. Councilmember Myers.
She can go ahead.
We've got public, I think, that might want to speak too.
Councilmember Myers.
Well, I think that it should go forward just for the reasons you just cited, all those questions you asked. I think those could be addressed in a public forum, in a discussion. I would like to know the answers to the questions you just asked, and I think the public would too. Now, my position on this is that the United States Constitution, the First Amendment, gives the citizens the right to redress their government, to address their government for a redress of grievances. And I think that this is the right of the people to have this issue discussed in a government forum. By our own rules, we have now limited ourselves, we don't have committee of the whole anymore if something like this could have been discussed. So the only place we can discuss it is on Thursday night at a city council meeting. You have decided that. That was the forum you wanted to have discussions at. So I'm not worried about liability. I think that it is the government's duty to hear from its citizens. That's basic First Amendment rights. And so the questions that you posed, that could be answered at a Neighborhood Association are the very questions I would like to hear answered in a public forum. So I support having this as a discussion item with some type of structure to it and to give the public the opportunity to address any grievances they may have regarding this issue. It may be that there's nothing that we can do about it. I don't know. But that's my position. I think it's appropriate.
Okay, Dr. Pratt, Councilmember Bear.
Thank you, Madam President. I think, to some extent, our question right now is, do we have enough information? And I think that at this point, I know, we all know how to count, and with the shortage of people, with two people who are probably not going to want it pulled, this will probably come up. But I think that it would be beneficial, if this does pass to Thursday night, for us to have some clear information from the administration about, you know, what constitutes, you know, how did they reach their conclusion to give the permit? I'm sure they had some logic to that. And I would ask that you have a conversation with them to find that structure because it doesn't need to be a free-for-all, not free-for-all, but, you know, I think we need to be talking about what can be done, what can the city do at this point and within our land development code. And then I'll also say that I think that we can have discussions, not on Thursday nights. That's what the workshop structure is for. And I hope that we can find a way to start having that as an outlet for us to have good discussions because I think Thursday night meetings are very hard for us to have that kind of dialogue and conversation. So I will be opposing it. I'm thankful that it has come to our attention so that we can get that more information. But I look forward to it being an organized discussion on Thursday.
Councilmember Bear.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with Councilwoman Myers on the fact that we have done away with our committee structure, which is definitely something, not something I supported. And it was the very place we could have discussed issues like this. Now we only have one forum, that's our council meeting to discuss items. And this idea that we have to come out with action, when we have public hearings, when we don't have to come out with action, quite frequently we do. But the fact is, if we want to engage the public, give them access to their elected officials en masse, we have to do it at a council meeting. It's the same thing with the mayor coming to the meetings. That's when he gets to see all of us in one place. So I just think that this idea that we have to have action, I want to be able to have some opportunities to hear from the staff as to why this happened. I know there's some considerations of liability, not necessarily from the perspective of the council members, but maybe from the city if something was done incorrectly. But clearly, we have some issues here, and we have some public, members of our public that would like to come and address their counsel. And I'd rather not have them during board forum. I'd rather have a venue where we can all discuss it, where we're aware of the issues. I provided plenty of information for you to see that there is some doubt as to the decision that was made. So all I'm asking is just to let it go to the discussion phase, and you don't have to speak if you don't want to in the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I do believe there's ways that the public can communicate with us other than a Thursday night city council meeting. And that's emails, telephone calls. And I like the idea that Dr. Pratt had with workshops, and also they do have the board forums. So there is opportunities for the public to communicate with us, and to act like the only time that they can communicate with us is on a Thursday night, I believe is incorrect. So I got a feeling that we're going to hear from our public this afternoon here when you open this up for public comments. So I've got a feeling that we're going to hear from our public. So I'm not going to accept the idea that the only time we can hear from the public is a Thursday night. Thank you.
You know, comments from council? Okay. My last comment on it before I hear from the public is, yes, we do have workshops. And this is not an attempt to not get our citizens to voice their opinion and to come to council when they have issues. But again, I would like to see some structure. So if you have some ideas, please get with Dr. Cox in reference to some structure on this. Anyone in the audience would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Please give your name.
Hello, I'm Melanie Nichols. I'm the current president of the North Hill Preservation Association, and I am the person who drafted that flyer that was put in your mailbox, Joel. And with all due respect, there was nothing in that flyer that said that this is going to be an action item. It said that there was going to be a very important meeting because this was placed on it as a discussion item for your agenda. So we used the agenda item, and we let the public know that it was going to be a discussion. There was no mention of action. The only action was our part, that if there was any people concerned, that it was going to be discussed in a public forum, and that they should be here. When you talk about workshops, a workshop would have been fantastic. The city mayor's office on July 12th of 2013 received a FedEx package from the state of Florida listing their intent for a parole and probation office for 1625 North Palafox. The first permit was not issued until January the 2nd. So if City Hall cared anything about what North Hill or any other resident or property owner in that area felt about what was going to happen, you could have had a workshop between July and January, but you didn't. The first permit was pulled on January the 2nd. None of those permits were posted on the construction site until Thursday of last week. So how would the public have any idea that this was going on? So I respect that you don't want to discuss this, but this is, this is our neighborhood. This is where we live. We feel that we have every right to come and speak to you as a council. You will see a lot of people on Thursday at the board forum because people are very concerned about what are you going to do? You talk about economic development. You talk about building neighborhoods. You have neighborhood leadership academies. I was the first graduate of that neighborhood leadership academy, what, eight years ago? But we've had no workshop. We've had no communication. No one has cared to hear what the public thinks about what is going to happen in our neighborhood. But thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Rushing. I'm an attorney with Carver-Darden, and I've been retained to represent two private homeowners that will live nearby to this building that, just for clarification, is already in place. There's been, I guess, some improvements being done to it. I'd like to address a couple of points. The first being the concern over liability for some sort of intentional tortious interference with a business relationship. Just so the council's aware, there are multitude of case law out there that addresses that when you have a supervisory interest or some sort of beneficial or economical interest, that you can't tortuously interfere. And that's what you have here. The city council, I would hope, has an interest in enforcing its zoning laws. And if you look at the specific definitions and what we're talking about going in, in fact, if you look at the letter to Mayor Hayward, it specifically says that we're going to be relocating from 3101 North Davis Highway. Five minutes of a Google research will show you that that facility on Davis Highway actually monitors over 7,500 parolees and probationers. Now, in the letter from Ms. Morris that was sent at the end of the year in 2012, it approves it for a C-3 zoning for an administrative probation officer, probation and parole office. Administrative probation is a term of art in the Florida statutes that's defined as a non-contact supervision. Well, that's not what you're going to have here. If you would look at 3101 Davis Highway, which is a location that's currently in place for the probation and parole office, it specifically talks about the actual monitoring of parolees and probationers. So it's more than what was approved in 2012, or not approved, but sent a letter that said it would be a conforming use. And then if you look at the letter that came from the state to Mayor Hayward. Now, I say all of that just to give you some background and tell you why I think this should go forward on the agenda. The public should not have to engage private counsel to handle this issue for them. I heard an earlier discussion talking about the council should follow their policies. Well, the council should also follow the zoning laws and not be selectively enforcing. I'm not saying the council's doing that, but if we have an issue where a non-conforming use ends up being in 1625 North Palafox, that's selective enforcement if no one's going to step up and help out North Hill. To put it back on the association and say, "The association could come with particulars," is just not, that's not right. They shouldn't have to. It's up for discussion. It should be discussed and to see how this happened because what looks like happened is somewhere along the line, the state said, "It's going to be an administrative office." And then by the time they start moving in and the permits are pulled and the letter goes to Mayor Hayward, it ends up being a probation and parole office that's going to do a whole lot more than just non-contact supervision. And these are the items that need to be discussed, and this is why it needs to be on the agenda Thursday night so it can be discussed, so everyone can get a game plan together of how we're going to fix what, in essence, is going to be selective enforcement of the zoning laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Dr. Pratt.
I would just strongly encourage you to take this forward to the meeting on Thursday. If you have it pulled today, no one in the community outside of this room is really going to know what has been going on. The only opportunity that we have is, the only forum we have will be at city council. And I think that would be a disservice to the community if you pulled this at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Madam President. I will say, though, I appreciate the input because I know there were letters sent a year ago and things like that, but this is the first, the council is officially hearing about this. And at our agenda conference, it's time to say, "Do I know enough to make an informed decision?" Right now, I have not heard anything from the administration about what has transpired. And so personally, my vote is to not move this this week because I need more information from the administration about how we got to this point and what their understanding is and things like that. And so that's my reluctance to put it on the agenda this week is because I believe we don't have enough information at this point, and I would like to have the administration give us a clear, clear input. I mean, I hope that, I assume it'll go forward. I hope that by Thursday, we will get more information from the administration. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Myers.
Yes, I was just curious about when we have discussion items, this is really for the council to have a discussion. So Dr. Pratt suggested putting this off until we got more information, and I was just curious, you're talking about for, to the next committee of the whole, I mean, agenda conference or, I mean, I just don't want it just to go away and be unresponsive to the public. But if it's for the purpose of getting more information, I possibly could support that rather than just, you know, saying, "We're not going to have it on the agenda."
We have, our next agenda conference, we could schedule a time period after the next agenda conference, which is on the, I believe, is on the 27th.
The 24th.
No, it's the 24th.
You'll not be here.
You will not be here?
You won't be here.
Yeah, I won't. Yeah, I won't be here.
Maybe, maybe we won't.
But of course, you know, it'll be left in capable hands here. But again, we will be able to have the information that we need. Councilmember Bear.
Just a point of information, Madam President. The lease begins on April 1st, so I would hate to kick this all the way down to March 20 and after March 20.
Okay, Dr. Pratt.
Sorry, and I'd just like to respond to Councilwoman Myers. And my intent was, it's great for us to have a discussion, but if we have no information about, you know, what the process was, what, we are in that discussion representing the city, and if we aren't aware of how this process went through the city government, you know, the administration, I think we won't be able to have a very informed discussion. And so, and so ultimately, I would like for our discussion to be as informed as possible. And so that's, that's my issue, and I understand the timeline, and I think it's unfortunate that we're at this point right now.
Well, I'd like to make an amendment, that this item be specifically set on the next council consent agenda and for the purpose of obtaining more detailed information from the administration regarding this issue.
I don't think we can make a discussion consent.
Can we do that?
No, it won't be, we have to take out the consent. It won't be on the consent agenda, but yes. Okay, we can take out the consent. Do I have a second? I'll second it. And the amendment is that we pull this item and that this item appears on the next, at a workshop after the agenda conference on the 24th.
You said it right. That's good. I like that.
So, okay.
So that's the motion that I'm making. I just made that motion yesterday.
Yeah, that's what makes you. Councilmember Tarah.
My only issue is that we're discussing this one particular piece where I think this actually needs to be a broader discussion of the whole permitted uses for the land development code in general, not just this particular piece of property. So that's why I'm sort of having an issue with it because we're singling out this one property when it's, it's the catalyst for what I think is a bigger problem. So I don't know about having a workshop for just this one property. I'm just thinking. I'm sorry.
I have, yes, Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah, thank you very much, and I'm going to support the motion. I do believe that we do need more information. We need to see what happened, how we got here. I believe that Thursday night, we're going to hear from, if we did allow this to move forward, that we're going to hear from a lot of the neighbors that are going to say they don't want it in the neighborhood. I think that that's already been established. We know that. But we need to figure out how we got here or how the city got here. And I think I'd like to also hear from the state of Florida, Governor Scott's office or somebody's office to get, figure out what their plans are, if they plan on hearing from the neighborhood, if they don't want it there. Do they have another plan? So I'm going to support this, you know, just to hear from the neighborhood that they don't want it in the neighborhood. I think that's already been established. And so we need more information. So I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Okay. I have two people with their hands up. I had Mrs. Duber-Schon, and then, but the gentleman in the striped shirt, I believe he had his hand up first. Please give your name. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Lenaza, and I'm mad. I'm just flat-out mad. I mean, we just found out about this a week ago. A week ago. There were two ads that were placed in the local paper, and there was supposed to be a public meeting about this.
A year ago.
Right. And now we're finding out, and now you want to put it off. The information is out there. I found it out within a day. I got all the information I needed. So I don't understand why you're going to let us down like this. You've got approximately, from what we've been told, 3,000 people a month are going to walk through that place.
Minimum.
And we're not even sure on that number yet. So that's 100 people a day, approximately. And if you look at the plans, the plans don't even have enough space for people to even park there. So that means all those people are going to end up in our streets. So put it off if you want, but we're pissed. We expect you to do something.
Thank you. Ms. Duber-Schon and the young lady that's with her hand raised, could you come up as well?
Yes, and I'm speaking to the amendment to postpone, and I think that is a chicken action by all of you who would vote for it. This is a very serious situation, and it has implications for every neighborhood in this city. And I think that the facts of how we arrived at this need to be immediately secured, not given a month for everyone to figure out how to make it sound good, not given it at a workshop where people can't come and speak because it's a council workshop where the public is not allowed to participate. You need to have the agenda item on the agenda, the state of Florida is prepared to be there. Are you going to try to reschedule with them, and then you play this game back and forth about your workshop that they can't be there? You have many neighborhoods, not just North Hill, involved. In fact, I am here today representing Mr. Eddie Tyer, the president of Belmonte de Volus, because we just happen to have a property that would be an excellent takeover and misuse application that everyone is now concerned about. There is a third factor growing in Pensacola about your property values, and your folks are going to say, "Let's write and get information down the line." If they could make a decision in September, or July, or January, whenever it was made, then you already have enough information to share with the council that you can be informed enough to discuss it with your constituents. Please do not amend and pull this.
Yes, ma'am. Then you can come after her. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Nancy Lenaza. Thank you for calling me a young lady. I'm not a young lady. I want to retire, and my house is my retirement. How can you say, as a city council, that you don't know how we got here? Look at the architectural plans for this building. We have copies of them. There's a room there for fingerprinting. There's a room there for drug testing. There's a room there for photography. Administrative offices? I don't think so. You cannot throw us under the bus. I don't want to work for the rest of my life.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, good afternoon. I've lived in North Hill for 21 years, and I must say I agree with several people who are angry about this. The rumor mill has been running rampant. We were able to get a lot of correct information. I'm a little astounded by y'all saying that you don't really know what's going on with the plans there. That really bothers me. But what bothers me more is, is you made the comment that the lease begins April 1. There's also rumors going around that if the city does not comply and allow this to go into effect for the seven years that this building has been leased, the city will be sued for the total amount of the seven years. So if that's what's holding you back on protecting our homes, our children, the people in our neighborhood, you need to revisit that and look at who's not doing what they need to do because somebody has been negligent here. You don't put this kind of thing in a residential area without talking to people. So... So if it's, you're going to put everybody at risk because you've made a mistake with a dollar amount, then we need to have a serious discussion about who everybody is representing, because you're not representing the people of Pensacola. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Speaking to the amendment. Thank you, Madam President. I need to remind council that we've had council members walk in here without council memoranda on a Monday and give us items to consider, that we had to learn about over the next three days, so that we were educated enough to vote on them. There is plenty of information out there. There are attorneys in the audience who'd be happy to give you more information. I've spoken to several people, including city employees, about this, and there is definitely a paper trail of information. If we want a presentation from the administration, all we have to do is ask. They have it all. If we can get the Department of Corrections here, which was offered to me during my meeting with Ms. Castile, that would be great as well. I think to rely on a court case that really has nothing to do with this and be threatened by our attorney, who I've lost a lot of confidence in over this particular matter, I think is not what we are supposed to be doing on council. I think we're supposed to be responsive to citizens. We are the governing body. It says so in the charter, which means we are responsible for the land development code, we are responsible for all of the policies, and we owe the citizens a right to be heard on this. And to push this to a workshop and wait until less than two weeks prior to the lease beginning, that's just a waste. I don't even know why we're even doing that. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, I agree with Councilman Bear. My fear is that his original motion will not pass, and I don't want this, the public to not have the opportunity to have their council discuss this matter. I think that there should be, that the administration should be prepared on Thursday night to discuss how the permitting happened and give us the information that we need. I don't like the idea of it being postponed, but the reason I made the motion is because I'm trying to make sure, hopefully, that the issue will be discussed at a city council meeting. But I'll tell you what, I'm going to pull my amendment to Mr. Bear's motion. Thank you.
It was, it was tonight?
And hopefully, it will go forward this Thursday night.
Okay. Okay. So...
Well, she's pulled it.
She's, uh-huh. She has, she has pulled it, the amendment. So we are back to our redler item that's here on the agenda, because I made a motion, so we're back to that motion.
Motion to pull.
The motion to pull. Okay? And so, yes, Mr. Kiesler?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to inject one thought here, and that is how anyone who votes to pull this today will defend that vote should our worst fears come to pass, and something has happened, whether it's a home invasion by a parolee, or even worse, an abduction by someone who has already committed a similar offense. How you will defend the vote to pull this without any discussion in a public forum.
Yes, Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And Mr. Kiesler, so good to see you again. Thanks for coming down. But, you know, I just can't see, we understand the neighborhood doesn't want it. If we just hear more of this Thursday night for two hours, what's the solution? I mean, where do we go if we just hear that the neighbors don't want it? I mean, we're hearing that. I'm hearing you. So I don't know, what would be, what would we, where would we go from there? What would you recommend us to go from there? Resolution? Or, I mean, and is that legal, from what are legal? I mean, I'm not sure where we go. We know the neighborhood doesn't want it. Let's be reasonable. Let's take a step back.
I would just hope, Mr. Johnson, that you take very serious consideration of what you hear from the public. If they are angry, if the whole neighborhood is angry, you can't just dismiss it.
Or not. We're hearing you. We're hearing you. We understand.
That's what's going to happen if it was not on the agenda Thursday night. There's no other opportunity for the public to give their thoughts on this.
Well, we already understand the neighborhood's upset.
And I would say that there may be some very valid points that you might consider. Thank you.
You know, we're going to eventually wrap this up. Mr. Tahar?
Yeah, just real quick, and I just had a quick question, and this is probably more suited for Ms. Morris or Ms. Castile, possibly, but, I mean, it's like, it's going back and up with what Mr. Johnson said. At the end of this, if this moves forward to Thursday, at the end of the discussion, I guess I have the feeling, because there's not a lot we can do about it, is we go, okay, and then we just move on to the next item. I think we have a lot of angry people out there, because, you know, other than, there's not anything that the council legally can do. We can't go back and tell these people to go away, so we need to make sure that...
It's a zoning issue. It's not zoned correctly.
Again, and again, that is why, you know, that, again, that is why, if you've already spoken to the issue, you would not be able to speak again, okay? Only the people who have not spoken will be able to speak. But that is why I made the statement that it does need to be pulled. We can have it, you know, at, as a workshop or in there, so that we can get enough information, because on Thursday night, there's expectation that something is going to happen. There's an expectation that the neighborhood will get relief. And if that's, you know, someone says, "Yes, you can do something," and "You can't do something here." So I think that we all need to take this, what Councilmember Johnson stated, a step back to make sure that everything is lined up, and making sure that the neighborhood does get the answer that, then we can find the best answer and the best solution here. And I think we do need to take that step back. Now, I have three individuals that got their hands up. Those are the last three individuals that are going to speak on this issue. Come on up after Dr. Pratt.
I just wanted to clarify the way our new process is, is if this were pulled, it would be on the next agenda. So it's not that we're saying we don't care. It's, our question today, whether we want it on the agenda or not, is do we feel that we have enough information to make informed decisions? And I think that many council members, from what I'm hearing, are not sure they have enough information. But, and then I will clarify also that it does have to be a supermajority of council, yes? That, and my sense is that then it will likely be, because I, Councilwoman Myers and Councilman Bear have sort of signaled that they will probably support it. So that would mean that it will be on the agenda regardless of, it's only five, we only have to have five. Okay. All right, so it's iffy. But I thought it was six. Sorry, I was misremembering.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, in that pretty turquoise shirt there. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm Suzanne Wag, and I do not live in the historic district, but I do live on North Hill. And I've been there for 68 years, probably on North Hill longer than anybody else in this room. I've seen lots of changes in North Hill. Some of the changes have been good, and some of them have not been so good, but this is the worst. And yes, Mr. Johnson, you've heard that we're all angry, and you will probably hear more of that Thursday night. And yes, we want some information, and I think that you can get that information from us on Thursday night, and you can hear that information on Thursday night, and so can all the rest of us. I think that if you have the people from the administrative offices come to that meeting on Thursday night and say, "This was done, and this was done, and this was done, and these papers were signed, and these letters were sent," it'll be information for you, it will be information for us. We don't expect you to raise your hands and say, "Stop, leave the Coca-Cola plant. That's not going to be done." We understand that. We also understand that you can gather information at that meeting, just like we can gather information from that meeting, by the appropriate people coming to that meeting and starting how the decision was made administratively by the city of Pensacola. And we want that information. We want to hear it out of their mouths, just like you want to hear it out of their mouths. And at some point, perhaps, it will come to value, that there will be an understanding that the zoning was done improperly, in which case, we're going to kiss the State Corrections Department goodbye and the Coca-Cola plant. Perhaps there'll be nothing that we can do on North Hill, and we will just have to live with this. But at least, if you put it on the agenda for Thursday night, we will get some answers, because you can have the people from this administration come to that meeting and answer your questions. And we want that answers all at the same time, and that's what we would like to hear.
Yes, Councilmember Johnson, could we finish?
I just, I just thought of something, and I'm hearing this, and again, I understand the neighborhood doesn't want this, but wouldn't this be more appropriate if we asked the mayor during his communications to maybe explain what's happened here? I mean, this just needs to be a discussion item, to where we hear from the neighborhood saying that they don't want it. We understand that, but would it be more appropriate that we request from the mayor's office maybe some type of communication on Thursday night to explain how we got here? I mean, we're hearing from the neighborhood, and to have this prolonged, you know, going on about they don't want it, we understand that. So let's get beyond that and try to find out how we got here. I'm just throwing something out there. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another individual in the back. Yes, two individuals. Come on up.
Yes, my name is Mike, my name is Mike Sheehan, and I've lived in the North Hill area for 30 years. And there was an action that you can take on Thursday, and I think it's an important one, and that is, is there's a certificate of occupancy that's going along with this building. I don't think it's been issued yet. I think that you need to put that on hold until you get your answers. Because once you issue that certificate of occupancy, I think the rules, I'm not a professional in that area, but I would think the rules are going to change entirely once the certificate of occupancy. Because it seems to me that there's a zoning problem here. Until you get to the answer of it, I think you need to kind of put things maybe down for a week or two, or whatever, maybe until the middle of April, till you guys can work it out, but don't issue that certificate of occupancy.
Thank you. And the last person to speak in the back?
Yes, ma'am, Eric Need. I'm a resident of North Hill. I'm also an attorney. I've sent a number of communications through staff, and I've been trying to work with staff. I'm prepared, and had been prepared, based on what I've seen of the records, to defend what the city and city staff have done. What I can't defend is this body not hearing from its constituents. And you may think that no action is necessary, but the action of actually hearing from your constituents in a democratic polity is something that is your job. Whether you can take action on it or not, whether you think it politic or not, whether you think it is something that you want to hear or not, or you think you've heard enough, the fact of the matter is, you sit in those seats to hear from your constituents, and this is the opportunity for them to talk to you en masse as a body. That's something you need to understand and you need to accomplish. That's action you can take, is to sit there and listen. You may not want to. You may think you've heard enough. You may think that people are, you know, angry, and they don't need to be angry, or it's out of our hands, or we don't think we can do anything, or maybe something can be done, but we can't do it tonight. Fine. I'm actually behind you on several of those things. I think things can be done. It can't be done Thursday night, but you need to hear from the constituents. That's what our system is set up to do, and that's what you need to do. And I'll be up there to defend that no action needs to be taken Thursday night, and I'll defend you not taking that action in front of God and everybody, that the appropriate processes need to be followed, and they need to be followed deliberately and correctly according to the law. And I intend to assist as much as I can to do that, in as non-aversarial a manner as I can manage, until it doesn't come to that anymore. I frankly don't think the city is in a position right now that it is powerless to act. I think it does have power to act, and I'm taking those matters up through proper channels with city staff to get those things to be accomplished. But this body needs to hear from its constituents, not just the people that showed up at the agenda conference, but the people who are concerned about this, who have had notice about the meeting, because it was an only agenda item. And to snatch it away from them at the last minute is going to be taken very ill, I think, from a political standpoint, and for you as the representatives of the people in this city. Just listen. That's all we need you to do. Thank you.
Okay. We are seeing the comments. Please vote. Raise your hand for pulling the item for the motion. Please raise your hand for. Those against? Okay. The motion passed.